It is.
Good morning, Mr. Smith.
Good morning. This is Steph with number fifty-five or ninety-two.
You originally had the ninety-two roll back there. And it's got to be, it got signed up yet.
She might have sent me the state before she said it earlier. Oh, okay. And I thought that one didn't pass. Okay. All right. Thank you.
I think so. I'm actually, I thought you had.
You started kicking her out. I did, yes.
I understand. I'm available. So I was so glad. Great, I appreciate you. It's nice to be back since. As you always say, you were here a long time.
Yes, I just, I'm still on. Yeah? I just wanted to hear yourself. I'm just doing today. Um, I'm here, I'm looking at some of this. She had a feeling you were proud of these. Uh, because I used to do this years ago. She asked me if I'm sitting in the hour. Let's see how much.
Okay, everybody. Sorry. That's okay. We're going to call things to order. I'd like to thank you all so much for coming out this morning in this rain. It's a little bit tough to get out of it, but the moisture is sure walking side. I would just like to take a minute. We have Senator Scott and I making people meet here today and introducing each other. I met our attorney for the day, Mr. Day. I will take it over to Superintendent Jenny. Oh, yeah. Let's go ahead and have, I hope everyone has the time to review the minutes from March eleventh. If there is no objection, we vote through the minutes from March eleventh, twenty twenty-four. Okay, see, no objection. Objection is not true. Now, it looks like I will turn over for a brief introduction from Superintendent Jenny. Again, just thank you all so much for being here this morning.
So trustees, just wanted to share a little background of what you're doing. So what you have before you is you have the Colonel Wright's statute that was sent out to trustees. And that was with you, the legislature, the legislature, and signed into law by the governor, and that will go into place on July one. Within the policy, or within the statute, they require that more than our policies by July one. So that's the work that we're doing from now until to get a policy put in place prior to that date. The policy you have before you, the draft policy you have before you was provided by the London Schoolgirls Association. They worked very closely with Mr. Scott for it. And turning out, Al, he required a little of the school district. And he worked on that with the statute and drafted the policy for you. When you look at the policy itself, the first three pages are definitions. Pages four through five was permanent notifications. And then pages six through seven address questionnaires, health records, student records, and diploma procedures. So that's a summary of the overview of the policy, of the policy that was provided for you. When staff was wanting to do this policy as well, when we first found it, it very early out of the month, we were going to as well, we agree that the, that the policy does need to be reasoned at the statute and also clear operation for the search for issues required. In the Choruch County, we have a very rich and strong portal of commissions. On the top is a, in fact, that office immediately changed for us. These parents are heavily involved, already with their education of their child. It's part of the sign-on block who required the notice. And as Mrs. Howie said, Mr. Day is here for trustees and a resource to help guide you through this policy work. We will call day to bill. And it's quite nice to see us face and work together for a year here. So trustees, the next steps after you've looked through the policies and the adjustments or changes that need to be put into place. The first reading is done Monday night for the policy. It does not have to be a final policy, just be sure trust to remember that. What it does is get you the first reading. And then it is trustees to schedule additional board policies for now until June tenth in order to, to adjust the policies in the prior to that second reading. If it's approved, it's the June tenth orderly, I think, for July one, July one, again, my first reading of the statute. So that's just a quick overview. And so if it's important, I will carry it back over to Chair Al.
Okay. Well, I'm excited that we're done today. I actually appreciate every motion, but hopefully, hopefully, before I just can ask. Is that that doesn't exist? Can you, Senator Scott, can you say that I know so much about how it's looking about and what their intention was? Why are you disagreeing?
No, I think that there can be a brief discussion of maybe the legislative history, but I note that there is no public comment set aside for this meeting. And so I want to be cautious. I respect Senator Scott, and I'm sure he'd respect that idea that this isn't set up for public comment. So I think a historical background would be appropriate, but I want to be careful about moving into something that appears to be public comment when we call people that there is not today.
Well, and I understand that I consider this as public comment when we're asking the senator, who was chairman of the committee, who lives at the store, or to give us an attention behind the bill in our ability to craft this policy. Because I think there's differences in each district as to what prompted his ability to get in. And so getting his take, his standpoint on why this bill, what was discussed in the Senate, is good background information as a resources at the district staff.
Yeah, I think a limited discussion of that is appropriate and probably helpful.
Okay, there. And I will preface my work by saying there's two bills. As you be aware of, you've got the original Senate File Nine, which is a joint education committee bill, modified in the Senate, modified again in the House, became law. There was a private bill in the same area, started out as House Bill Ninety-two, Clark stiff from Rock Springs. That passed as well. It's House and Rollback Number Fifty-five. The two are consistent. The second bill, I won't say much about, kind of passed under the radar. And it's one I would recommend that you consult your legal counsel about because I think it may have the practical effect of mentioning easier sort of schools. And that may have been, I don't know, that was the motivation behind the bill. The Senate bill started out year, two years ago, copying a bill from Florida. That passed the Senate, didn't go anywhere in the House. Came back in the interim, and the Joint Education Committee Chairman Northrup and I decided the really controversial part of that bill was not within our charge of management. So we dropped that. And what you've got is a pretty plain vanilla statement essentially that the parents have, need to be consulted, need to be kept informed, and have some fundamental rights. And that fundamental rights part is also in the legislation, the second of the. Reason we did was we were hearing quite a number of complaints. Not from this district, and I would emphasize that. This district has a good reputation of kind of foster parental involvement. But we were hearing from certain other districts, it did not feel that way. We're hearing from the public there, the fates, particularly Cheyenne. But Rock Springs had problems with another district. And some complaints that the parents couldn't find out what was going on with their kids. Were being ignored by the school district, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And so that's why you had this bill. It does go into some specifics, which I can, and I can talk to the specific instances to the extent you want me to. But I would warn you, you're dealing with matter of law here. I am not an attorney. I know enough law to be good and dangerous, okay? And as long as we understand and take the comments that way, I can tell you why I think things were done the way they were. My basic perspective is that I think in this history, you know, you've got to comply as a practical matter. I think you're at legal risk if you don't. I think the greatest risk probably comes out of the second bill. And probably if you get a rogue counselor. And I know I had heard such, I had no personal experience in other states where they had one that was counseling kids particularly in gender change area, really out of ideological basis. That's considerable probably. That sort of thing is, is possible in a legal risk. And that's something that attorney could bridge on better than I can. But that was part of the motivation behind this. It was a fear that that would happen here. In addition to the districts that were just plain seeking hostility, oh, I just prefer it. Madam Chairman, I don't know whether you want me to go into more detail. I can talk of specifics.
I think that's a good report. And maybe if there are questions that come forward, I just want to keep this as referenced as a report as compared to something that gets into public comment. So maybe if the board has questions as you approach different aspects of the draft policy that Senator Scott, you'd be consulted to give a report as to what the legislative viewpoint was when the statute was adopted, that would probably be appropriate.
And, Madam Chairman, I would want to add two things. I think that you look at policy, you've got a couple of issues. One of them is that there's a provision that says that notify students prior to guardians.
Senator Scott?
Prior to if there is a change.
Can I interrupt you for a second? I guess I'm concerned about you giving advice or comment about what the specific policy is and what changes need to be made. Because that gets into the public comment that we've said isn't going to happen. I'm happy to have a report, but we're not allowing public comment on the board policy itself. If we allowed you to make that, we would be depriving everybody else that we said wasn't going to have the opportunity to do that.
I don't want to comment, I don't have the board policy, I don't want to comment on it. I just want to point out two instances I think you're going to have to consider.
You know, I think that's public comment in terms of considering that. If you have a report about what the legislature, legislature wanted needed to be considered, I think that's appropriate. But if it's your own public, if it's your own personal opinion, we've told everybody else that they can come and express their own personal opinion about what should be in the policy. I'm reluctant to let you do that when we told everybody else that they're not allowed to.
Madam Chairman.
Well, I really appreciate your social background. I think we need to start kind of doing the work. And again, if we can ask any questions, I'll be both, if they come up, maybe ask them those parts. We've got to kind of start delving here. But thank you for that background. Everybody should have everything in front of them. You have the first law from the Senate and then board the, the draft policy. I need a motion to go ahead and start work on this policy.
Nice little move.
Perfect. Second, if I can push it in, okay? So as I said, every page is our definitions that are pertinent to the policy itself. I hope you have the time to kind of look through them. Does anybody have anything? I wrote some notes on my. Yeah, so trustee Schmidt, I apologize. So on the very first one, actual knowledge. This one's difficult for me because it basically, I feel like this is basically asking teachers a whole new way to spy on children. And they technically, you know, aren't teaching them and there, and I know that. But the idea of purported, which is another term for alleges, of you alleging you see a student and something that you think might be, you know, directed in any sort of way, you're required to, you know, handle the problem and, oh, my God. You know, I just, is that the other comment?
I'll go with you on that one. It does say it needs to be verified first, though. So within that same line of order, change is verified as. So it does sound like there needs to be some sort of, so this definition says, hey, so notice that they tell whoever to track that, they investigate it, and then, I don't know how they verify that, whether the students have asked, or parents say yes. But to verify.
And it says a school employee with a forward to investigate or determine. So I think that's incredibly important, that we make sure that it's going to the right person. I have written on here several times, obviously, social workers, psychologists, head administration. They should follow a teacher, classroom teacher necessarily.
They will follow a classroom teacher. And they just know if they're professional and you look at the college. These definitions are maybe to be applied to your health or health. That's what I think if they're looking to use to a reasonable person, names on it, and so they have a lot of new staff members that have different backgrounds and different expertise. So you might have something that either a custodian or something, and they can take that information and give it to a military, or a counselor, or a teacher, everyone else. So truly, the definitions are trying to fit every part of the bill as far as we can.
I have a traditional initial. I have a problem with actual knowledge term. I just feel it can be, it can be, this is an excuse to not report. I didn't have actual knowledge, I didn't have, you know. So I don't know if there's a better term, or if we just take actual out and just put knowledge of it. That would be better, but I think the actual knowledge is giving some specificity that gives to the staff member off the out, say, well, I didn't have, you know, actual knowledge, that type of thing. So I do think it's important that they notice a specific change, that they do report it. But I don't want to give it the option to not. So I just don't like the term actual knowledge. I prefer it to just be knowledge.
I have a problem with the very last part of B under actual knowledge. And a reasonably observant person would notice the purported change. I don't have a problem with an employee directly observes the purported change, but what if the employee doesn't? And somebody says, well, aren't you a reasonably observant person? Why didn't you see that? I picture a custodian going down the hallway. Custodian is not going to notice every kid. I picture a teacher in front of a classroom with twenty-five kids. And that teacher can't look at every one of those twenty-five kids and reasonably observe every single one. So I have a problem with that last part.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Woodford, did you have something?
Actually, I agree with actual knowledge. Are you looking for that exact refer to the statute?
No, it's not. I think for specifics, correct. I appreciate where President Allen has talked about verifying this employee. So I think taking up a word of actual heading knowledge and then that definition to try to be, to tell they take young cameras, or we don't know if it's supposed to be the particular change. Yes.
What's good is when you stick up your, your ideas.
Oh, I like it. It's a good idea.
And that way, when I move around, when you get this bigger. Actual knowledge, I think it was probably put in there for the reason that there's a lot of gossip hearsay that comes around. And, and, and you get into a quarter loss of like, so what do you have knowledge of? So and so told you well. You know, this gets rid of all of the hearsay gossip, whatever else. So I mean, you actually have the actual knowledge yourself, and you have to see it or have actual knowledge. If they have been picking the actual, this opens a huge, so I would.
So I spent some time reading both states statute and the draft yesterday. And there's, there's something that I, I mean, if I'm not mistaken, these definitions are directly out of the state's statute, which means that we actually change the statute. Uh, trustee, have you, trustee Schmidt? Oh, I just, it's an actual knowledge extension. Because I had not seen, I looked through it, looking at it for that reason, to see if that was wired, that turned you, and it was not listed in the state.
Trustee Schmidt is correct.
Can I borrow your comment on the definitions of actual knowledge and just using that?
And in kind of building up of what trustee Chris Robertson said, there are different kinds of knowledge at law. Sometimes knowledge is implied to you based on your position or the circumstances. And I think that's where it gets to be a challenge. And so I think this policy is intended to create a definition that defines, excuse me, what actual knowledge is. And if you want to take out actual, I think the key thing is to define what the knowledge is that makes the person then have to do to report. Because I agree with trustee Schmidt, this policy shouldn't be a way that people can say, I have a kind-hearted and empty head. I didn't know this was going on because I ignored it, and so therefore I don't have to report. That's what wants to be avoided here. But I think if you don't have a definition of what knowledge is for the purpose of the policy, then you get into the concerns about whether it was implied, whether those kind of things. And so it's a, it's an attempt, I think, by Scott, the drafter of this, to distinguish between implied knowledge or something that might arise to that as compared to you have knowledge. And we call it actual knowledge in the policy, but it's not actual knowledge that I saw this, I know it. Actual knowledge is defined not only as seeing it, but trustee Stidelli, to speak to your concern, you know, you also tend to have to have a definition that helps people understand when it is you have to report. And it's kind of what in law, in civil law, we call the reasonable person standard. What would a reasonable person view under these similar circumstances? Not somebody on either poll, but what would a reasonable person do if they saw a student presenting in a particular way? Would that cause them to then go and make this report that's required? So I, I kind of think that that, what an observant person would do is another way to say, what a reasonable person would do. And I think that's another one of those kind of angering standards that helps you define not only what the knowledge is, but when maybe somebody should report. So I think you can do some tinkering maybe with the definition. But the key to this is to give the school district administration and staff a clear understanding of what knowledge is that then triggers their responsibilities under the policy. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you so much. Any other further discussion?
I, I'd like to have a definition of the knowledge.
So keeping, would you, would you like to make a motion to keep actual knowledge or a motion to just say knowledge?
And no. I'm sorry, you mean you're, go ahead.
Okay, I think as long as we have the definition of knowledge, it may not matter if we have the actual knowledge.
And that's just what I was going to say, is in this unique circumstance, you've made actual knowledge a term of art for purposes of this policy. Actual knowledge has a specific definition as it's set forth below as compared to what we as layman, if we're in a grocery store, at the church, or something else, might view as actual knowledge. You defined it here as to what it means for this policy. And in my view of it, I think this is a very good definition that would prohibit somebody who saw something from being able to deny it or escape responsibility to report.
Well, I think on this one, we're just still discussing if we want actual knowledge or knowledge, but the definition seems pretty good. I know trustee Stidelli wanted to take out on B, it would say, an employee from a record of service would report the change, but I think that Dr. Smith has spoken, and a reasonably observant person. So taking that out, keeping that in.
Once again, I think that's kind of a definition of, you know, what the direct observing is. You know, once again, it takes away, somebody can say, I didn't see that exactly. It requires some kind of standard that maybe you saw something that should have made you report. And it's kind of similar to the, you know, child abuse standard that's also contained in the school district policies. You know, if you have a reasonable basis to believe that triggers an allegation, you're right.
I would say, based on what Mr. Day has said, that this is giving our legal definitions and giving it a legal defense in court. So if that's the case, or the reason we deserve it, and the actual knowledge, then I would say we keep it because we are defining that we, that it is being sensible, being obligated employee. So I would say it's, it's fine.
Mr. Day, thank you for alleviating my concern on that particular phrase. I see that perhaps I was guilty of misinterpreting it. No, I think, you know, that's, everybody brings their experience to these things. And I think that's one of the benefits of these kinds of meetings is to share those experiences. Because a lot of times what we put in our policy in terms of legal issues may be a little bit different than what our common experience is outside this bill.
Thank you.
Officer trustees, this rule is very heavily with definitions that are legally standing. I have to, and that's where it should be taken with more careful focus. So I do encourage you, like heavily on the order, attorney. Well, the trustee cataloguer is serious, isn't it? Yeah? I would encourage you, if this is written, it is a way to be very explicit and clear to the expectations of employees and administration, this will be, all the same type of legal and sound. So as you work through these, you can a lot of forethought on the even to make sure that they're feasible, but also accomplish the intent. on the even, to make sure that they're feasible, also accomplish the intent of this statute.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so the definition of actual knowledge, do I have a motion to keep it as it, as it is written? You say it. Perfect, in the second, trustee Schmidt, in the second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of keeping the definition for actual knowledge the way it is written in the, the policy, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? Okay, looks like we will keep actual knowledge as a group, trustee Stedeli?
I was jumping ahead to the next one, I'll wait until you get there.
Start us off as soon as practicable.
Okay. I see a contradiction in the fourth line, as soon as practicable shall mean not more than forty-eight hours or not more than two business days, um, does anybody else see a, a problem there? I mean, does it mean, which one applies? If, if you see it at the end of the school day on Friday, do you have to report it before the same time period on Sunday, or does that two business days start following Monday?
I have it as, uh, I would certainly.
Um, I think what Scott anticipated, and I, I think you're right, trustee Stedeli, maybe it's not the most part fully drafted, um, is that if you saw it within, uh, on Monday or a Tuesday, um, that you would have, um, two busi- or forty-eight hours, but if you saw it, say, at a Friday night dance, or a game, or something like that, um, because of the weekend, that would give you the two business days starting Monday, um, I'm not sure it's an adequate solution, but I think, um, that's what it was intended to do, is speak to what happens if, um, an employee sees something, you know, headed into a weekend, not necessarily at class, but in an extracurricular activity, that, you know, that could apply on the weekend too, um, but it could probably use some redrafting to, um, clear up the kind of confusion that you've identified.
Great, thank you, trustee.
So, it does vary into that, say, whichever is greater.
Yeah, say that again.
Whichever is greater.
At the end.
Yeah, so it talks about two forty-eight hours, two, two business days, whichever is greater, so it kind of gives you that leeway, I think that would be ten, or, or Mister Day, it's a, okay, well, yes, we get it, whatever you see it, get it.
As quickly as possible.
And trying to put that, you know, kind of light on what trustee Schmidt, the concern she raised before, trying to put an end time on it, so that you have a defined period that you have to comply with by the end of that period as compared to letting it rip on potentially.
Perfect, thank you so much, I have a question, trustee.
I just have one question here, Kate, when we say we have to, um, report it, is it a written, is it a verbal, is, it does specify in here, does it matter?
It does specify.
I mean, in this definition, as soon as practicable, is it, does it matter whether we do it as a written form or just a conversation, it's not everything is necessarily written in the, in the record, I agree, that would be better to just have a conversation with the family, but is that, is that a legal issue that we don't specify, and if something's dropped, that we become liable, or is that very different?
That's a good point, um, and generally, my philosophy is always to document things when they happen, because that's the freshest memory that people have, and that documentation can come in handy in the future, and so that's something, um, with your, um, permission, that I might respond back to some, to begin with and see, um, if there isn't, um, a, a way, or if anybody has discussed maybe including a definition of a report, um, within the policy that might define, you know, written versus, or, or if there is a circumstance that the board's interested in having, or a regular report wouldn't be made, but there might just be some kind of communication.
Okay, thank you. So, I don't have anything? So, as I read, um, as soon as, as soon as practicable, um, one of the things that I saw later on is, uh, the requirements are different, um, for different reporting, and so if we are able to use this term as soon as practicable, and then later on, it tells us whether it can be verbal, because there is one that can be verbal, and then there's, there are others that have to be written, so the definition that fits in then, um, the, the, um, later practices tell us which one.
So, this is more like, I mean, yes, then yes. This is for me, is, is later on, is later on.
Right, yes.
This is kind of a statute of limitations, you have to do something within this time period, it defines the time period as compared to what in the student policy.
Do I have a motion to make any changes, or a motion to accept as practicable, as a reply to the rest of the policy? Perfect, then trustee Schmidt, um, we have to do a second. Or, or trustee Stedeli, in the second, any further discussion on as practicable? Um, all in favor, please do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion's very, as far as practicable, you guys, and you guys also, really appreciate everyone for the discussion, and on the other side of this house, particularly in WSA and the rest of the policies. I'm turning the question over to the team now. So, over, it looks like, the next category is change, um, change in a student's educational, physical, mental, or emotional health or well-being is any change that meets one or more of the following criteria, this, I do believe, was important, I'm glad they kind of broken down into these six categories, because I think most voters are up to having a lot of emotional, uh, emotional days, yeah, and it would be hard to think about calling the parents when they're happy, when they're sad, when they're mad, when they're happy again, is anybody happy, anything about, uh, yeah, my kids are calling me to get to school, homework has been ripped up, someone's crying, but they're fine, they're having a great day, they're not even calling their friends. Uh, yeah, if, uh, you know, if a pose of a risk or a threat to the student's safety, health, or wearthor, welfare, or the safety, health, or welfare, others, mental health or medical condition, necessitates intervention or treatment, uh, school will call a community mental health worker, if it requires a modification of the student's educational program, um, and I think that's important, because I think we do have parents who sometimes assume that changes to their kids' programs, like ID's or vital courses, have to develop knowledge and that is not the case, um, if it affects the student's access, eligibility, participation or performance, and the school district specification program, or a bigger than actual, extracurricular or project or activities, or an assessment or, or evaluation, if it involves disciplinary actions, sanction or consequence for the student, such as detention, suspension in or out of school, expulsion or referral to law enforcement, or if it results in complaints, allegation, or investigation upon the two, such as bullying, harassment, discrimination, or violation of rights, this, I feel like it's already kind of taken place in the discussing, but I'm going to see if anyone can. Okay, so, I motion that we keep change as the definition, as the written draft policy, in the second. Uh, anybody's on, uh, trustee Schmidt, thank you. Policy to take, including turnovers. Um, okay, any further discussion? Trustee Schmidt.
I just have one bottom that's, um, and, just because I know this is not, um, regarding what happens with this, if there's the issue of a name change, does that fall under this? How would we legally proceed with that? Um, as do, are, are teachers obligated to do it, are they, can they say, they won't offer what your records say?
I do, I do. So, I have a later, so if you want to adjust my.
Yeah, I don't know, um, frankly, this is designed to be very broad, um, and, and change in their mental well-being, um, could be broad enough to say a change in name is a well-being issue, but it's, that's something that's likely to be litigated in the future before we understand, um, how courts are going to approach, um, that kind of issue.
Charles, trustee, so we look at this one, we have many policies and regs regarding many of the things that you're suggesting, we're all looking at documentation, uh, any kind of reformal being changed requires, there's a mystery in regulation, the regular requires, or should the court document those kind of things, is incredibly common, incredibly common, that a child can buy a different name, it's tied, so, Robert, be brought, you know, by name, or something other than a formal name, maybe it's teaching, maybe it's whatever, so we do that very, very frequently, uh, it, I think the intent, and I was looking at this right course, the intent on the end, and we, we believe in staff and push through it, that the intent is to make sure that we're communicating with parents, and that we're not hiding anything from parents, we're not lying to parents, so if Kylie decides to buy a different name than, you know, Kylie, and your parents say, "What are you doing by a class, or a pal," but to tell you the truth, as a teacher, I did always remember about parents when they said, "Call me, change the horse and the rich or whatever it was," and I, I just, I just don't think about it, because you're being respectful to the child, you're not hiding it from parents, it's not about that, and if he becomes, you know, if someone does it, yes, how should I be?
And my question is, do you need to define what that is, because in today's culture and today's society, that name change can be a sign of a well-being issue, a mental well-being issue, and it can, it's not just, I don't know, we call Billy Bob this week, it's, it can be your, we'll say, a pronoun, so that's okay, so, in order to give the teachers a, a more of a cover as to how to handle the situation, approaches them in a class where they're doing more of the societal change because of a gender identity issue, should we put that in there to give that direction to the staff, so that they're not just kind of left up there like, "How do I deal with it?" You know, because, I mean, yeah, I get it, in your day it was one way, but today, society exists a little different mentality, and I, and I know that's what was behind this bill due to what happened in North Spring, so should we, as a board, make that provision in there so that staff understands that it's a name change that has affected their well-being, that it's indicating that a well-being issue, which a reasonable person should be able to determine, uh, if something's going on, if they don't change, that's all I'm.
Just a reminder that, so we have a policy in the layers below, where we're going to define, and so, um, we just spoke with administrators yesterday, there is a very fast turnaround time around getting this into policy, uh, the policy in July is somewhat problematic with, um, we don't have, our staff here, so, our principals aren't prepared, um, for their first meetings when we come back in office, that we will have trainings around this, and so, I see this as our first layer, um, and then we will have standard operating procedures for some of those cases, and I think that's where we can get into more detail, I would, I would share, um, what Superintendent said, that we had a lot to make these that go along, and so there would be beyond a name change, that there would be other factors that we, we come into when we report a, a, a concern to appear, as opposed to just a name change, but we would certainly be able to define those, and are going to have to help, um, our staff so we can assist.
Well, I don't know exactly what was behind this, it seems to me, looking from the distance, that it was the gender identity, it might be, it might be worth listing it as number seven, because a change is a change in the student's gender identity, you want to have to keep.
Can I just comment from a legal perspective? Um, there's an idea when you make a list of things, um, that that, because you made a list, that becomes the exclusive list that might be applicable to that, and so I think what the goal in this was, um, not to list, um, specific individual events, because if you list a name change that comes with a gender, um, identity change, but you don't list something else, does that mean that the something else, um, is no longer governed by this? Um, and I think the way the policy, um, is written, and what I would expect to happen if I was a trustee, is that if a student came and presented, he was Bob the day before, and presents with Betty the next day, that that's going to come with kind of some emotional issues, things like that, I think that that falls into this already, um, and I would expect that that would be part of the training, and the policy that would come under that would be that this is an example of something, um, but if you stick it directly in the policy, um, that specific identic, um, item, but you don't put something else specific in it, you're always going to have the criticism that, um, by, that the way things are interpreted at law, you've excluded that from the list, so I think the goal was to be as broad as possible, um, but I think that one and two, um, and potentially six are called into question almost immediately if a student presents, um, under that hypothetical where they were Bob one day, but Betty the next, I think there are going to be all sorts of emotional issues with that, that you would want your employees to identify under this policy.
As you say that, gender identity isn't mentioned in this policy except for as a definition.
And I was curious about that.
So, if we aren't mentioning it there, why would it not be good to put it in as one of the changes, because I think that's the intent of it, being listed as a definition to indicate that if that change occurs, so, I understand it could give that specificity, but as, uh, Chairman Prisoperson said, that was probably the intent of it being put in there anyways, so, why would we not put that in there because this policy is dealing with the times?
I mean, that was very, um, very good, and you noticed that, I noticed it too, and actually had to call in to Scott as to why they're, why do you define the term that's never used in the policy?
To make a relevant, I don't think we should, at least add it into that change because I think that would.
And with that in mind, I see no reason to include a definition of gender identity, because it sets it out head and shoulders above anything else, as if the, this is purely speculative on my part, as though that were really the big thing that the people who wrote it wanted to address, and I find that to be quite discriminatory.
So, yeah, that's, that's why I wanted to put it up there, because, but, uh, I mean, to take the, the other side of it, uh, people who are pushing gender identity change, they don't think it's realist, they don't think it's mental health, they don't think it's, uh, bullying, or any of this kind of stuff, I mean, they just, they think it's healthy and interesting, everything, so, you know, from their point of view, it doesn't have to be, uh, reported, right? And if this whole thing, we're sitting here, it's because of gender identity, and I think it is, we need to list it, we need to put it in, right? If, if legislature is not brave enough to do it, I mean, somebody has to just, just point it out, like, we're sitting here because of that, let's put it in the policy.
And then, it is actually in the policy of page five, under, um, the first paragraph under, the last line says, um, classes that address sexual orientation or gender identity, so it is in the policy.
You can see it all, you're right, I'm sorry, where is that?
Oh, page five.
Page five, on section two, it's the very last two words in the first paragraph, section three, excuse me.
Which would be, which would be important, because there's, there's, um, this then becomes a process for which we have to notify, and that is a specific topic that we need to.
Okay, so could you get this in the policy, definitely, probably keep the generation any time definition, and then, oh, yeah, sorry.
Um, I just wanted to voice that I agree with trustee Stedeli, that, um, if you put too much emphasis on this, you know, maybe this should have been a, a policy that was written that said, "This is about gender identity in the pod."
you know, maybe this should have been a, a policy that was written that said, this is about gender identity in the title. But I don't look at it that way, and I, I consider it very discriminatory towards, so I think it's finally different.
I think we have to remember what this is about, it's about informing the parent when to change in the student, and what those changes could look like. Um, so, if the child seems to be changing in a, either gender or identity, then the parent needs to be, um, needs to be reporting to the parent.
Two points, um, one, to the parental notification, we can send it to instruction, that's an instruction theory, that's not necessarily a change, um, in mental health. And two, gender identity in medical field, as far as health change, is actually, that is a, that can be a medical diagnosis of a gender identity issue. That is a medical, I believe. So, it does tie into the health screening tool of mental health. So, I do think we should keep it in there, one, for the intent, but also because it's mentioned as far as instruction, the definition. But also, I do think we need to list it as a change, because it can, and we could put it under, um, it is a mental health and medical condition that necessitates intervention, treatment, that school follows, community health over, therapists, and we could put, I, example of, and tie the gender identity into that, because, and then that way we're not excluding, but, uh, giving an example.
So, not making, not making a number seven, but specifying this name?
Yeah, as for example, gender identity, because that is a medical term, and it is a change, and it will fall under health screen, and it just kind of because of, you know.
I would repeat that, frankly, I don't think that needs to be in there at all. And I liked what, uh, trustee Howie said, that if this is so important to the people who wrote it, why didn't they put that in the title? Uh, if we're going to define gender identity, then springboarding off of what Mr. Day said, why don't we include the definition of voice change? I mean, there's, there's a physical change. So, if I have a kid who was first tenor, and now he's second base, why don't I pick up the phone and call the parent? Now, somebody's going to say that I'm really putting it out there. Yes, I am. Uh, personally, I don't think that needs to be in here at all. In fact-
The definition of gender identity?
The gender identity. I don't think it needs to be part of it. I know it is there later, but I don't think it needs to be here. In fact, would I be out of order to move that that be struck?
So, I'll come in just a second.
Very good, thank you.
The team's not coming by, and I think it's kind of going back to, to pretend like it's like the, what they're talking about abnormality. So, we just need to there, the abnormality, also with the training, because it, obviously, that is a big thing, what the whole idea of this legislation was. So, we identify that with the training, great information to identify and say, hey, you might not think it is, but we're saying it is, so if you see it, identify it, have actual knowledge, however it is. The other option that I have, if you instead of specifically addressing, you can just make a little more catch-all, saying, any other abnormal changes in students' behavior, et cetera. So, it's okay, you're right, because you can't just have a Bob and a Betty the next week. What's that? I got it under, I can try to report it's actually, hey, there's, I didn't cut it in there. But that one at least is a little bit more of a catch-all, saying, hey, here's the list, but also, if there's anything else to see, report.
And I think my love, that you said it very, you know, in that kind of draw, so I think the policy stays broad, because we allow the individuals who work directly with the students to, to make that call without intent. So, I think by leaving it off, um, you know, we've obviously seen, we can leave this as kind of, you know, a broad spectrum to where, if the kid comes in and says something, and it sounds a jokey, or the teacher hasn't proved to call and say, hey, they were really adamant today that I, you know, did this, um, and under, you know, dissection of the health and welfare, we're gonna let, we're gonna let you know about it. That's just the kind of how I'm seeing it, which transfers to trustee for that person.
So, instead of just taking up gender, we have others to choose, kids change their identity cats, and, uh, we could call it personal, because really, I mean, if a kid is normal, and they come to school, it's about the cat, you know? I think the parents need to know that.
And I mean, it's more than just the name change. I mean, what if a student came who was dressed in a traditional boy's clothes the day before, it comes dressed in a traditional girl's clothes the next day, but doesn't change their name? If they haven't changed their name, and we have name change embedded in here, what does that do if you want a teacher to respond to that? Um, and maybe you do, maybe you don't, but I think that that's kind of the benefit of having a broader category that lets the school employees look as an example of number two, if there's a mental health or medical condition that would be reported. Uh, but the, uh, gender identity thing goes beyond just a name change. And I think that just what the name change is the only thing in the policy, and nothing else, leads to an argument that we've excluded out of.
Yeah, so can I go to staff first, and then trustee and chair? So, I, I would just say that in statute, it says sexual orientation and gender identity when it talks about, um, obtaining the written, um, and or electronic permission that would be shared. So, I think this, the definition itself, and being good where it is, is to, one, define for us what that is, and then two, to meet the statute specifically when we get there.
I, I just said, clarify, I wasn't saying the name change, I was saying the gender identity as an example, because you're right, there's multiple ways gender identity can manifest itself. I'm just saying, because it's listed there, it can, it is a medical, so it would fall under the health screening tools. There is a medical definition of gender identity, that instead of specifically listing it as a number seven, that we put it in as number two, as an example of a mental health medical condition that necessitates intervention, just to give that direction, that's all. I'm just saying, as one example, so we're not narrowing the focus. We're just saying, this is one example of a change that could be reported. That's all.
So, trustees, trustee Howie, I encourage you with this, with this policy, Mr. Day said it very, very well. It's, when you look at this, it's instant talent, it's one of those persons. So, you're looking at a lot of different things. And so, we have a lot of, um, we are just trying to control, it's just, we have a lot of children, we're trying to run around, or cats, dogs, horses, it's just, oh, you're not, they don't want them. And so, I would really strongly encourage you, keep it, keep it with the intent of what it means, if you go to control, or to treat, or to notification, and when you find the note, our parents, these parents are guarding the speech practice. It's one of these employees' actual notes, and changes to his educational, physical, mental, emotional. So, it's instant talent, it's not a one thing, what could be a name, but we're looking at it overall. The intent of the policy is to do just that. I mean, it's not to hide anything from parents, that's never been the case. And so, I encourage you, and superintendent, give us a, a, definitions of how we-
Right, and just a reminder that definitions from first, so then when we look at the next sections that tap up, how, what should we be doing with those, um, with those definitions? So, um, it, it, and you said it well, it's, it's really the totality of the policy that we would be looking at as well.
Okay, trustee Mark? Just, um, to refer to trustee, I was thinking of another, I'm not aware of it all. I think this is a well-known thing, and I was just giving, so, I'm, you know, if she was kindergarten, they are unique, so believe for his name, for his genes. He wanted to call the young child, you know, and that was like, you know?
What was his name?
Long John, okay, Long John Silver, that had two wives, the young at this time. It wasn't, so I don't think, I don't know, I was spending too much time on this, I was, I think, it gets, really.
And I think what, yeah, I think what we're kind of discussing is really to just keep it broad, and remember that we have professionals who will know. And then, as later stated, these are just definitions, as the policy goes on, the, the definitions help us understand when in the policy, um, you know, the parents are gonna be let know, but again, it's not, I'm giving them, or out of the dark or anything. So, trustee, sit down, do you have something?
I did, then I didn't, but now I do.
Okay.
So, by including the definition, we are not in any way, shape, or form suggesting that if a teacher or a school employee notices a kid, a change in a kid's gender identity, that that automatically prompts a phone call to the parent. Am I correct in that?
No, I don't think so. But I'll turn over to you.
I would ask for reading, if I said well, because I read this policy, if there is a change, as you just indicated, that would be a contact.
I think that's what the policy anticipates, is that that would be a change, that, um, like, you know, flag a, a con, a contact with the parent, so the parent that is now, sort of knows that it's a pejorative contact, that something has gone wrong with your child, it's a report that your child is now, um, requesting this as part of his or her educational process. And you, you know, we're complying with statute, I mean, there are no ideas of that.
Um, I think to cover the school that made children, if, if that's proven responsibility, the people reasonably determined, the prudent, um, employee, that kind of covers the fact that a kindergarten teacher's not gonna be questioned, or bored, or a kid who even would avoid dressing up like a princess that day, because that's a very common occurrence. Um, but a high school teacher or a middle school teacher that has a kid that comes in and changes something fundamental about them, that legally responsible, or that observant, um, staff members could be like, you know, I'm gonna think of that differently. So, I think it's covered in that broad spectrum. This is just tying it in into an educational, and as well as a mental health discipline, it does. So, it's covering both bases, the definition of that term. Um, we can cover it in curriculum, but we should also cover it in the manual, as an example of a mental health change, because that is the intention.
I respectfully disagree, and I think it was included as a prerequisite. I think it's blatantly discriminatory. And I guess what I was saying is, the report back to the parents, um, when the school district, um, says, this happened on this day, that I would expect that that report not be pejorative, um, that your son or daughter did something wrong by doing this. Instead, it's, I think, what the statute and the policy anticipates is notice to the parent that this has happened. Um, whether it's right to give notice or not, I think is within the legislature's prerogative to determine whether the school district has to give notice under those circumstances. You know, I think it would kind of be the same thing if somebody, I mean, I hearken back to my high school days at NCHS. I mean, I was kind of a long hair for a long time, and then decided I was gonna shave it all off. When I came into school with, you know, less than a crew cut, and I had more than one teacher pull me aside and say, you okay? Um, and so, I kind of anticipate that, you know, that's kind of what we're looking at, you know, is all of those kinds of changes, um, and, you know, having some kind of a finger on the pulse of what's going on to be able to let import the parents, so the parents can then take action, and they'd be appropriate within their parental rights.
I'm fine with this, the way it is. I also think that going on, what the comments have said, that our employees are reasonable adults, adults that have the best trust of the students in mind, and through, and regulations, and the training, we can get this covered and make sure that there is some sort of change if we get it.
I'm very glad to hear that you did not consider shaving the head to be an issue concerning mental health.
Okay, so we've had a really great discussion. We can go ahead and just continue on from here. I would give a motion to keep the definition. Oh, is that, I'm gonna get this motion, okay. All in favor of, right now, please, saying the change as is, um, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Uh, I'm sorry, are we dealing with just numbers one through six?
Yeah, change, the definition change.
Okay, thank you, we're not going beyond that.
Okay. So, I'll go ahead, and if we have, we have a first and a second, and if anyone in favor of keeping change as is written in the policy, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Right.
Okay. Um, thank you so much. Next one, pretty simple, Day, Day shall mean one business in?
It doesn't mean me.
I'll have a motion to keep Day as written in the policy, as it's specified, one business in?
Absolutely.
Perfect.
Is that a 24-hour period?
Day shall mean one business in.
We're dubbed into Black's law dictionary, and there is a definition, and it's basically a 24-hour period.
So, we've had a motion, we have a second? Perfect, trustee for stop person, thank you, any further discussion? All of us in favor say aye? Any opposed? Okay, thank you. And the next one, the definition for gender identity, gender identity shall mean an individual's personal sense of their own gender. I know we've already had a pass of expression, because this is in the policy further, a definition probably is appropriate to stay with it. Um, trustee Sedley had mentioned, okay, so I give a motion to keep the definition for gender identity in here?
Absolutely.
Perfect, and a second? Great, thank you. Um, all in favor of this, can we say aye? Any opposed? Great, thank you guys so much. Health screen tool, a health screen tool shall mean any diagnostic assessment that, that tests pre-mental, mental, or physiological, physiological illness or disease. Keeping that definition, I give a motion to have it as fine. Perfect, then trustee Schmidt for a second? Trustee, this officer, thank you. Um, any further discussion on that? Okay, so you're not all in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Perfect, any opposed? Great. Go on to page three, the next definition is instruction. This one, I think we'll have some pretty good discussion about, instruction, action, practice, or profession of teaching, and includes planned teaching addressing gender identity or sexual orientation. So, the following shall not be included in instruction, and there's one through eight, responding to a question from a student during class regarding sexual orientation or gender identity as other links to any topic of instruction, or referring to the sexual orientation or gender identity of any public figure, historic person or group, or fictional character, where the referral provides necessary context in relation to a topic of instruction, student-generated schoolwork, student-to-student speech, classroom references to a person's family, library books, extracurricular or pro-curricular, or student clubs, dual enrollment courses taken at or from a college. I am really nervous that attorney quite a bit on this, because some of it did confuse me. Um, can I start by asking, student-to-student speech, so if we walk in on two students discussing something that might inappropriate, I mean, which can range from anybody's thought process, is that just a, stop talking about it?
I think it depends on the context still, what you see, and who wants him, um, and all he's my daughter, he's a math teacher, in eighth grade in Cheyenne, and always in the rest, she comes in across physical altercations, um, personal altercations, over this or that, but she has had occasions when there, um, has been other incidents. I mean, I think what this is, is, the statute speaks to the school district's education process, and what the parents' rights are. When you have student-to-student speech, that's not really part of instruction, you know, it, I hate to use the word extracurricular, because that has its own definition. Um, but student-to-student speech is subject to discipline under another basis. And so, the idea is, within the context of instruction, what the school district can control, its, um, teachers teach in that process, student speech outside of that, in the hallway and the rest, is not a school-endorsed activity. And that's really what the statute is designed to do, to speak to, um, activities that school districts control that are part of the education process, and notifying the parents of the same. Um, so, once again, in the definitional aspect, this is outside of school district activities that are intended to be governed by the statute in this.
I had a kind of a different view of this whole thing of instruction. I got really confused in the first sentence where it says, "The following shall not be included in instruction," which at first I read to mean, we aren't supposed to address any of these. And then I read down, and it say, for instance, number two, referring to the sexual orientation or gender identity of any public figure, historic person or group or fictional character, where the referral provides necessary context in relation to a topic. So now I'm thinking, maybe this is not, may not be part of instruction, but it might come up. So it doesn't, I think it means that that doesn't mean we can't, like, ask, answer a question for...
Exactly.
Okay.
That's what it is, is if a student in the middle of class comes up and you're referencing a work of literature that has a character who identifies in a particular way, and that might have context in the story that being part of the lesson, that that can be discussed on an immediate basis, you know, coming up as a question in a student, as compared to the kind of instruction that needs to have the parental approval. That's what this is, it's defining what doesn't need to have the parental permission slip that identifies your teaching about gender, identity, or sexual orientation. That's what this purpose is.
I wonder if we need to maybe, yeah, the following shall not be considered as instruction?
Included in the definition of.
Okay, or something along those lines.
And maybe it would be better, just in a stylistic formatting issue, to break the following shall not be into a separate sentence. I mean, so you have your definition of instruction that stands alone, and then you have a new paragraph that says, "The following shall not be deemed to be included in instruction," or something like that. So then you have made it clear what the definition of instruction is, and then you have a subset below it of what more qualifies as instruction.
If I understand you, Mr. Day, are you saying that, for example, well, let me start off by saying, I hate it when people put words in my mouth, and so I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but if you feel that way, let me know.
Not at all. These are great discussions to have, and I don't take offense to anybody.
Excellent. Are you suggesting that we could say instruction? Instruction means action, practice, or profession of teaching. Period.
By the purposes of this policy, we want to maybe narrowly define instruction, because what this ties to is the statutory requirement that parents get notice, that this kind of instruction that includes gender identity or sexual orientation, they have to have notice of that in advance. And so I think you need that in there, because that fits in with the notice provision that comes later. But I think just looking at it, and for what it's worth, reading statutes and other policies, I think that you could take the following shall not be included, and you can say it however you want, but make that a separate paragraph, so it kind of pulls it away from the definition, and makes a subset of what's not included. But that's form over substance.
If I may continue, we haven't shared. Could we say, if we put that in a separate paragraph, the following shall not be included in the definition of instruction? And the reason I say that is, because let's say that a couple of kids are talking about, hey, I read this definition of J.F. Hoover, did you know that there was a lot of speculation, blah, blah, blah? If that comes up, no one could say, well, the teacher was teaching, but that's what took place. If we say it's not included in the definition.
Right, and so maybe the following shall not be included in the definition of instruction.
That's my suggestion.
Okay. First, I think trustee should have a nice one, just, I think trustee's going to make a motion on that.
I'm sorry.
We'll have to have a motion on that here on this one.
Just tell me when.
Perfect.
One of the points I'd make, well, first of all, number six, library books, I think that should be taken out, we've covered that in our library policy already with the controversial issues, that type of thing. So I don't think it's necessarily for our district to have that, knowing that this was given to, this policy was broad for the state. So I think we should take that out. And secondly, number two, the concern I have, and maybe the superintendent's going to give clarification, is that there are programs, Sabas Learning, which we do carry in our school district as a school book, or as a program that we purchase subject matter from them. They're Pearson Publishing, we know that, I know, I've researched it, it's laced, the gender ideology, the gender theory, that type of thing, is laced in its instruction booklets, they make no bones about it. So my concern is, how do we, as, how do you, as a staff writing regulations, deal with that? That it, even though it's in the instruction book, it's not necessarily appropriate, and it may be concerned, considered an offense by a parent, it was brought up in a non-relevant manner, because the publisher decides to do that. These are issues we have to deal with in the National Publisher Department. So how do you address it as a, and I'm assuming you need to address it in policy, but it wouldn't be addressed in that sense.
Chair, I'll be taking some questions from trustee May Tralston. Troy has put in Mr. Cox and Mr. Troy's businesses. Troy has a very tight process around the adoption of materials in line of curriculum, in line of standards. So standards not having anything to do with, or to allow. I am very much not aware of any of those sorts of materials that we use to have literally reference to it, to generate the materials when they go through, that's one of the items. And there's been a long debate discussion about what's controversial, what's not controversial, but there's a very tendency to go through the national, to these sort of materials that are structured. So I don't believe that this is going to allow any of those sorts of adoption materials. I have to pause there and give you more context. Your controversy is correct.
I think what's, the question says, we put the second line, includes pedagogy, addressing gender identity or sexual orientation. In order, number one, then how does a teacher not respond to a question regarding sexual orientation and gender identity?
No, so the policy is not saying the teacher answers on, the teacher, this is included in saying that that's not included in the definition of instruction. So if the student asks, and there's like a response, then that's not considered instruction, the teacher's just responding to the actual question that's been asked. Does that make sense? That's why we're trying to kind of break, break this apart, or we might kind of add a different paragraph, right, and it's if the following shall not be included in instruction. I'm going to repair this to them. Did you get it? Because they're turning a while now. Get some, yeah. Well, that's okay. I want to definitely, all the trustees now, we can't ask for these questions now, because it is confusing.
Leave it to lawyers. There is a definition of what instruction is, and then rather than giving examples of what instruction is, it gives examples of what instruction isn't, for purposes of the policy. And because the word instruction is used throughout different policies, kind of in different ways. So this way, trying to anchor something to the instruction notice obligations, there was a definition of instruction, but rather than defining everything that it does include, I think the decision was made, it was easier to identify things that aren't included in the proposed definition of instruction.
Perfect, thank you. Well.
Chairman Malley, and trustees, board, did we read this definition, instruction means action, practice, profession, teaching, and includes planned teaching, addressing gender identity, and sexual orientation? We do not have materials that are taking that approach or philosophy within our curricular departments, and are addressing that identity or sexual orientation. So we do not adopt the primary resources, we cover the secondary resources, and that we still need to follow for that definition.
Okay, great. Trustee Alkins?
Okay. So would this be treated same as religion? You know, if a child asks a question, in religion, a teacher wouldn't go deep into it. And so I don't see it, a teacher necessarily going into the subject of the gender identity, you know, that it's treated the same, and maybe that's a question for the lawyer.
I think it would be. I think it would. The concern is that what kind of educational resource or relationship you create, if a student asks a question and isn't responded to, so they're kind of looking for a free space where a teacher can not potentially cause a detriment to that relationship by not acknowledging the question, but being able to acknowledge it, briefly respond to it, and move on. It's not a focus of the learning lesson that day, but I think it's important that that, you know, dialogue and relationship continue, even if it's just a short, brief response as to what gets registered.
Great, thank you. So, trustee's another thing.
I think you've described that very well. We do not want to create an atmosphere where if a student says something, I'll go back to J.F. Hoover, is it true that J.F. Hoover, blah, blah, blah? We don't want to create a situation where the teacher says, sorry, we can't talk about that. But it would be okay for the teacher to say, well, perhaps you found that in your book. Doesn't really matter, it moves on.
Yeah, it's germane, if it's germane, it's germane because the vaccine moves on, or tell us the student, thank you for noting that, but that's not really what we're talking about, in directing class back, come on to the lesson.
But we don't want to create a situation where the teacher says, no, we can't talk about that, and shame on you for what we've done.
I guess that's what we're talking about.
We have one recommendation, uh, trustee Stedali, to have, so the first, I do need a motion to basically take and create kind of a paragraph, so it would say, instruction means the action, practice, or profession of teaching includes planned teaching, addressing gender identity, or sexual orientation, and then that's following completely into a new paragraph. So I will make a motion to move that into a new paragraph, and I have a second. Okay, thank you, trustee Schmidt. Any further discussion? Oh, yes, trustee Schmidt.
Are we including in, according to what I said?
Oh, so I'm going to actually, I give this motion to the library.
No, no, I was, I just, you know, I wanted to definitely, um, definitely, is that a second motion, a separate?
Yes, a separate motion. So to create a new paragraph that says the following, to move that down to a second paragraph, is all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you. Trustee Stedali had made a recommendation that would say, the following shall not be included in the definition of instruction. Aye.
I shall move.
Perfect, and a second? Any further discussion? Trustee Stedali?
I think that goes a long way toward clarifying that we are not excluding these particular topics.
Okay, great, okay. All in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you. We did have a motion by trustee Schmidt, which I do agree with, and we said library books, we have that covered pretty briefly, so trustee Schmidt, do you give a motion to remove the library books?
I shall move.
Great, any further discussion? All in favor, please do someone say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you guys so much.
At the end of me short-circuit your discussion, the parent is taken out of Wyoming statutes, a couple of different statutes, is to what it is, so I don't know that there's a lot of variation.
On the question, I, number seven, with extracurricular, co-curricular, or student book, we're saying that they can, if they're on a trip and they notice some conversation or something like that, and they give them a report, that can, and I, that is, okay, I just want to make sure that was correct. And then to the attorney's, well, we have to go on all of those as well, you know, to the attorney's point, the parent, I think we should list statute fourteen dash one dash one oh one, which is the defining, defines parent, the term parental parents, shall mean, shall mean either a natural or adoptive parent of a child, a person of judge, the parent of the child, judicial proceedings, or the guardian, legal custodian, or other persons having control or charge of the child. I think we should put the actual legal end citing, just to be clear.
So count that as a motion on number, on parent, the definition, just to add to the statute, that it goes under, wait a second. Perfect, chance, our judge, our officer. Any further discussion? All in favor of adding the state statute to parent definition, say aye. Any opposed?
Just the reference of the statute, what I heard you say is the wording of the statute. This reference, the state statute, number fourteen, dash one, dash one, go to the one which is.
I would just say the right phrase, perfect, that's what I meant, sorry. So I think we should add, I mean, put in the wording as well, because that way people understand.
Is statute this which provides?
Yeah, the definition. Which we do, yeah. Yes. It says, as set forth in the Wyoming State Statute fourteen dash one dash one oh one, the term parent or parents shall mean either a natural or adoptive parent of the child, a person judge, the parent of the child, judicial proceedings, or the guardian, legal custodian, or other persons having control or charge of the child.
Can I can email that to you, if it makes it easier to insert into the statute, or we put it in policy?
I was going to say, so, okay, so we're going to have a motion, I believe, to have the state statute definition of parent included with the state statute reference number. Yes, and just cross out, this policy would cross out there, what was put in there originally, and put this in place, it's a null and empty.
All in favor of, as a motion, a second? All second? Any further discussion?
Well, the state statute didn't have the eighteen-year-old who was in, did, is there a reason for that? I mean, I'm not an attorney, I just, I don't know why.
That was put in for the catch-all, under our people who are under eighteen-year-olds who are emancipated, allowed in through our decisions, under specific circumstances. And so it doesn't really need to say who are under eighteen-year-olds who have not been emancipated. That's just kind of added on, that's the definition of the child, basically, as compared to the definition of the parent. When you reference eighteen-years-old who have not been emancipated, you're talking about the children as compared to the parent, and the definition is for parents. So I think the statute, you can't go wrong with the statute for the definition of the parent.
Okay, perfect. And that's the motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor of putting the state statute definition of parent included with, and the statute number versus what is part of it in the draft policy, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great, so that will be changed on the copy. Next definition is sexual orientation. Sexual orientation refers to individual enduring pattern of emotional, romantic, and or sexual attraction to others. I think it's a, just a good definition, I need a motion to keep it out, I need it written with this policy. Perfect, check, our officer, in a second. Any further discussion? Trustee Schmidt?
What's the orientation of this definition? Is it a legal definition, is it a medical definition, is it just a Google definition? Where does it, it looks very similar to a Google definition when I looked it up. So, just to be... So just to be clear, these are very hot topics. I'd like to be very clear, precise, the medical and legal definitions.
Chair, I'll be, trustees, I know. There is, as I understand it, I don't know if debate is the right word, but maybe not a consistent idea across medical and psychological fields about what a term sexual orientation means. From a legal perspective, that's a hot button issue. In the legal world, it's working its way to being defined by the courts. So I think what you need is a definition that makes sense in terms of the statute for requirement about notice about what's going to be caught. Because I think that sexual orientation and gender identity both roll into the notice that has been given to parents when either those subjects were going to be discussed. Yet we could consult with medical professionals to try and get that, but that's a little bit like picking up a bead of mercury. Sometimes it kind of squeezes between the two vendors. So I apologize, but I don't know that I can give you a precise legal definition that's been accepted routinely by courts as we sit here today.
Do you have one, Senator Scott, that you have one legislatively that has been bantered? Back and forth, there are various policies that you can use that language?
We can certainly consult with Senator Scott about that. I'm not familiar with legislative definitions of the term sexual orientation in other contexts.
I mean, I know the legislator, legislators, legislators have discussed it in various bills, especially in this last session. Is there a definition that was used in any one of those that we could perhaps use just to cool the language, whether it's been voted on or approved or not, since there's no consensus? It just gives us a little bit more.
And I can certainly use some investigation and look. I think one of the issues with the legislative process is there were several definitions that were discussed, but for whatever legislative reason, none was settled on. So I kind of struggle looking to the various alternatives. Those might be a potential definition for that. That's, like I say, not something that I can look up in Black's Law Dictionary and then get a concise accepted definition. So that might be something that, if the board is concerned about this definition, would need some more investigation.
Can we ask Senator Scott if there was any definitions that were banned to that forth in the last session?
I think you can discuss that. I mean, but the fact that the legislature didn't arrive at one, you know, you pick one that was rejected or another that was rejected, I'm not sure. But I think certainly Senator Scott can share with his experience in the legislative process about trying to define sexual orientation.
And the first thing I would say is that when you're looking at any definition, you need to look at how it's used. Because the, when we define a term, it may well relate to specific, out's gonna be used in a specific piece of legislation. So something, something, a definition, for instance, you're trying to parent. That would depend on how you define parent, may be dependent on how you intended to use the term. And if you pick one up, as you did, out of the emancipation statute, you may say, is that appropriate for this statute? And the way it's used here. Because they tend to be very, when you define a term, it tends to be specific to a particular piece of legislation. With regard to sexual orientation, I don't recall any legislative definition. And if it came up down there, I would ask our LSU staff to do a search to see if it had been used. Because, you know, we would necessarily know, because it may have been used in some medical-related statute that was unrelated to the purposes here. May not have been. I don't remember in the context of this legislation, any definition of sexual orientation. And probably the one you've got here comes as close to the general understanding as you're likely to get.
And I think that, just to add on, I think that Senator Scott's point is well taken, that when you look at it in the context of the legislation, you're not defining necessarily what sexual orientation is, but you're defining what might be caught or what's prohibited from being caught about sexual orientation. So I think Senator Scott makes a great point about this definition, that it really does fit within the context of explaining to parents what might be caught or what they get notice of.
I'm really glad you said that, because I do agree. And if you look on where the word does come up, that's exactly where it goes to, is training voice of both classes, that address sexual orientation. So I think for this whole, that definition, that's where it's been at. So I will make a motion to keep sexual orientation. Oh, excellent, I think that's a great discussion. All in favor of keeping sexual orientation out of the draft policy? Say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. That is a motion, okay. Okay, so the next one, well-being questionnaire. Well-being questionnaire means an instrument used to assess individuals' overall well-being across various domains of life. It typically consists of a series of questions designed to measure different aspects of well-being, such as physical health, mental health, social relationships, emotional well-being, and life satisfaction. These questionnaires may use a variety of questions together, information about individual experiences, feelings, and perceptions related to their well-being. Well-being questionnaires do not include informal building, big, building creative processes or quick checks used to assess classroom or school climate. So this is our final definition. I just wanted to know that because of where it shows up in terms of notification for parents, I do think this definition is great. But I will kind of also put in here that this is something our district already does when it comes to the kids on health classes and taking physical education and stuff. You know, parents are, any types of questionnaires they have to take. Trustee Schmidt?
I'm surprised with the definition. The only concern I have is that now, I believe, our climate survey will fall under this and that we would have to send the questions, because there are categories of individual health under our climate survey. There are questions of personal feelings. All the statements, the questions are a lot formed in the notion of how to appeal. Your behavior, your threat, all of that, all by this well. So if we're going to accept this definition, then we have to submit the questions that we're going to submit to the students, to the parents prior, as part of this notification, prior to the survey being presented to the students. As well as our behavior, and that may come under instruction, but our behavior policies, or behavior programs that we use, and our social, emotional learning programs, those all have to do with our social well-being, our mental health of our students. And those programs have to be presented prior to this course even starting to parents saying, this is what we use, this is how you can look at it, this is the two major programs that we use. That all has to follow with this. There has to be clarification.
Chair, I'll be, trustees, our district totally could take on that. I mean, that's not what this definition says. It said well-being questionnaire means an instrument used to assess the individual overall living, individual, climate is specific. Climate survey is specific back to the organization in school. There is no name on the survey that applies specifically to a student. It's providing feedback on different parts of the school, like security, those type of things. So it doesn't assess the individual overall well-being. It's not individual, right? Many of the surveys we do, they are out there public, they're online, they're distributed. People see them. This is not assessing the individual student or individual, it's assessing the system as a whole. So there is a, there's a name question here that's targeting specific student versus, versus school. Tool, that would be, there are significant differences in the question.
The thing I was, the thing I was thinking was, you may see that, they see the climate survey questions and they answer the climate survey questions too. So I think that's something they're already aware of. And I agree with the statement that says well-being questionnaires do not include informal building creative processes or quick checks used to assess school. Just wanted to throw in my two cents.
So I make a motion to accept the definition for the well-being questionnaire as it's written in the draft policy. One second? Okay, thank you, trustee Skelly. Any further discussion at this time? All in favor of accepting the well-being questionnaire definition? Say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you guys so much. Now we are, the policy itself. Yeah, let's do that, let's take five, whatever, right? Let's wet our whiskers and use the restroom, ladies and gentlemen. Yeah? Any more coffee? What am I, I'm sorry. I have to get my first cup of water. I hear a fan. I don't know what I got. So two seconds. Right versus left. Well, it's actually.
I'm good, though. I already, I have a conference call in two weeks, and you're sort of a small one. So I'm good. So I've had my fill of coffee. If I have any more, I'll start vibrating when I see.
Before I was sleeping, I would. I'm gonna check on my fake information to make it to school, okay? I had to walk myself this morning. And so I was like, lock the door, make sure you get to school. And hopefully they know. The school has to call.
All this grandson's barely in high school. He was shot in the head, so.
And I'll find out. Thank you. 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 You know, the work acts are very clear, where it does say, the principal or designated staff shall determine who will notify the parents of the student. Uh, I didn't really discuss that, but it would be pretty, pretty good to know who will best be in acquisition to speak to current situation. So, if you have something? Oh, okay, I make a motion to approve as it is written, section two, parental implications of changes to students' health or well-being, do I have a second? Perfect, then trustee Schmidt, and do you have some further discussion? Okay, trustee Schmidt.
Um, how does the, the, um, that according to our staff, falls under this? But obviously, they have medical guidelines, professional guidelines, how does that all coincide?
Chair Alvin, trustees, trustees, please, very kind to speaking to us.
Because this is, um, notification to students' health or well-being, I'm assuming a lot of schools, uh, will verify and change, whether they go to the, um, counseling or nursing, that type of thing. So, because they operate with the legal standards, because their, um, their occupation, how is that, is this conflicting? Is this, I don't want to put employees in, like, legal ramifications, because their, uh, their industry has been smaller, that type of thing.
Chair Alvin, trustees, um, I think this is one of the, and, and, and statute is written, um, this policy, written on this, reading the president's report. Counselor vice chair, or not, that's an definite, no question.
My, um, initial thought about this is that typically what you'd be concerned about is what would be typically viewed as a physician patient, or a nurse patient, or a counselor patient relationship, and confidentiality that arises out of that. But because the vast majority of their population are minors, um, the parents or their guardians have a right to that information anyway. Even when a child comes in and reports to the school nurse, you know, that there's been an accident, I don't believe the policy is that the nurse can't tell the parents, because the child is their patient, if you settle with violate confidentiality. So, I think all of those are in line, so we could get to maybe eighteen-year-old student, you know, who's, um, reached the age of majority, getting those things dealt fairly upon, they're making their own decisions.
That's a point, I was just, that, um, practically, so, um, our nurses don't diagnose, and then, so, so they, um, and with our counselors, there are, um, there are parent meetings, so they, right, they're looking at the parents, those types of things. And then the eighteen-year-old piece, and if a student actually has to sign a paper that says the parent can have that information, so.
Right, did I have to question?
Yeah, I just want to make sure we're not putting, uh, employee information.
Okay, so we've had a motion, and a second to approve, we've had some discussion, um, all in favor of keeping parental application of changes to students' health or well-being as a written draft policy, please say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Great, thank you guys so much. Continue, section three, parental application and consent to instruction, uh, I make a motion to.
Go ahead.
That will be another discussion, so I make a motion to keep parental application consent to instruction as a written draft policy, do I have a second? Trustee Chris Hoffman, thank you, okay, further discussion, trustee Schmidt?
Um, one, again, I mentioned this earlier, um, and maybe legal clarification regarding social motion, if you're going to give your programs to the students themselves, as giving, um, programs have to be, you know, you have to notify parents of what that school is doing, um, if you do bring different ones every school. And then, um, further, I would also like to strike out parental consent, um, it's about, uh, what is it, lining down, where it says school district staff will obtain written or electronic consent. I would like to strike out at least one day prior, and just put parental consent prior to any training courses or classes that address sexual orientation or gender identity. And I would also like to add, if at any time during the training course or class, a parent thinks the material is inappropriate for their child, they may remove that child. So, one thing is actually, it is, and then, um, would you say you, it's, it's, if they can have them, is that right? Uh, yeah, and we put it that any time, they, uh, during the training course or class, a parent thinks the material is inappropriate for their child, they may remove that child at that time. So if they give consent, and then something comes up in a, in a sex ed class, like, they know, like, whoa, that's too much, they can pull out at that point and say no.
No, if you move that to practice.
I didn't, we have to clarify that specifically, so that a parent knows they're not, if they give consent, that they're not locked into that consent, that's why I.
I don't think kids are ever locked in.
I, I don't know, but because of the, now, so I just thought, you need to be clear, you always have the right to pull out.
Chair Alvin, trustees, uh, the first part regarding social motion, social motion, sort of materials, uh, related, if I have instruction regarding sexual orientation or gender identity, they're not part of it, they're not included in it, it's going to apply.
There's instruction. It's under the term of instruction.
Please.
Chair Alvin, trustees, chair, uh, trustee Schmidt, it says, order to ensure that parents, while parents are informed, decision regarding student exposure to instructional aid, to sexual orientation and gender identity, social motion, social materials cannot have sexual orientation or gender identity.
But, uh, you know, and what, that, that stuff is also on my, also, all of these actual, um, uh, definitely.
Chair Alvin, trustees, specifically, in the, 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 uh, super, uh, they, 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 after the Toronto County, you can go to the Toronto County website, you can pull up the curriculum, and then the social materials, so, with the pattern, which after us, so there's access to the primary curriculum, on your school, it's, it's, again, the social motion, if you find, if you, if you, if you, as written in my special policy.
When I asked Scott, particularly about the one day, what kind of his thinking was about it, um, and he said that through this, um, board, the school board organization, that the ideal was, is that, um, the more notice, the better, to know what to do with the student, if they weren't wanting to participate, that was the one day issue, because that lets the teacher know, by the end of the day, before this instruction was going to happen, which students weren't going to participate, and so they had a backup, you know, they could send them to the library, they had some other, um, already organized, um, method to instruct them while they weren't participating with others, and then, um, having that come in, happen, however, before the instruction or things like that, tend to be more chaotic. Uh, that if you could have it one day before, um, I think it's up to the trustees as to whether you want to include this specific, you have the right to remove, um, during the presentation, but the one day, actually, I think, is kind of just a structural method, so they can make sure they have other activities for the students who are not participating.
Go ahead. I'm just a little bit confused, because we're dealing with three, right, three items, and at the end of this is, uh, in this section four, so is that wrong, or is, I just don't know, how to interpret that section four, or, or, or just, the very last name?
Um, all that, trustee Hammond, you got.
Um, so when I thought sex ed, I had to put permission slips out, and I just routinely provided alternative education for any student that was, you know, it was already planned, wait, that's kind of, they weren't, they just.
Um, we're talking about the curriculum, um, being on, uh, what did I run on? Um, is any of the curriculum, uh, copyrighted, where the parents wouldn't be able to see it, and you need to put anything in here about copyrighting or whatever?
Oh, well, I'll sit in there, I don't know.
Parents wouldn't be able to access, because of the copyright.
Thank you for asking, um, Mr. Wilkens? And the superintendent?
Chair Alvin, trustees, trustee Chris Hoffman made an observation, that means actually, is it, is it, is it, is it?
Is it? I mean, I don't know, is it referring to what?
Oh, in this section, right.
This is in this, so.
Oh, I see, right, okay. Yeah.
Well, yeah, I didn't know whether it referred to section four, to make this, trying to encompass that into it, or is it in this section?
So I think you should say number three, this section three. Okay. Yeah, so let's, I'll, let's, I'll make it a, a motion to amend. Oh, very perfect.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, trustee Schmidt?
Okay, so, I understand the at least one day for logistic purposes, but then I would at least like to add in there, if at any time during the training course, okay? Or class, a parent thinks the material is inappropriate for their child, they may remove that child, that's, because I could see, they get going, and then something, like, or, if you have an issue with two parents in one class, that they have no, so, but that option. I just want to, I, I like it, I just want to know how, how my words, my words, my words, and, if at any time during the training course or class, a parent thinks the material is inappropriate for their child, they, they may remove their child or that child, I'm not sure.
Did you give us the move if you were saying?
It's, yes.
Okay, so that amendment, uh, first.
I moved that, that, that on to the first paragraph of the section.
Perfect, I said, is that, um, any further discussion on that? Okay, trustee Schmidt, now, we can, we can.
And what I was hearing earlier, the rental permission can already be located in time, is that in some of our other policies? Or is that just a practice?
Maybe it's just, I was gonna say, I think it's just like practice. And, you know, parents should know.
Yes.
Okay.
And that's, I was just gonna say, to me, it's, it's not necessary, because that, to me, that's a good, right, if, if, if there doesn't.
They put to give, and it doesn't, but.
I, yeah, I, I agree, especially, it's.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, yes.
It's an out of the way.
Could you go in, um, the, um, regulations that follow?
Chair Alvin, trustees, Mr. Hay, that very much, so. So this, this, this policy, it carry a different, the, the policy, the, 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 the specific, this, 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 what we found in the, in, so, so it very more, it's, it's.
I'd like to ask, in, in informing a parent of this, would you inform them, if the school, be informed of the standard operating procedures, or would they be informing them of policy? Because what's the most direct route to the parent? I want the parent to know it's there, if the parent's going to see standard operating procedure first, is foremost, then put it there, if policy is what they're willing to write. Or do we need to be consistent in all lines?
What I've seen with other school districts is in the consent form that goes out, the consent form will have a line that informs the parents that they have the right during the presentation to the problem. Um, and that way, I think that that's an immediate, direct notification to the parent, um, as to what goes on with that, typically, the expressions to do that are in, uh, the regulations that follow the policy.
And that's what I was trying to say, that are, in my, that's what, right, so, so, if, whatever's the most direct route to the parent to notify, I don't, if we don't put it in policy, does it give an opportunity for it not to be put in red, because it's not in policy? That's, that we want it in there, if we are, potentially, you may not be able to, you may send it, that's.
So Chair Alvin, trustees, you, you took his policy, right, and, and said that the, the staff, administration, absolutely, yes, that, you know, or, or, it was a change, there's a lot of these, in, 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 policy, I'm, 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 I'm.
Okay, so I may have you in a minute, because we're.
I withdraw.
So you, okay, then I'll withdraw that.
Okay, great, thank you.
So, Chair Alvin, first and second, this one, if you, if you.
Okay, so if we are, first and second, I am going to add an amendment, I'm sure you guys, seeing, or changing that to, to, to. Okay, just leave it up. Okay, any further discussion, trustees, get out of here.
We will, please, please state the motion, is it, is it?
Okay, so the motion, as it stands, is to, um, accept, as written in the draft, the parental application consent instruction with amendment at the very bottom, just to correct, at the very end where it said, um, of the subjects described in this section with the correct role and new rules.
Okay, I'm still, so, we, part of the, 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 the.
I withdrew it.
Oh, I withdrew.
Because it's going to be a standard operating procedure.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, trustee Schmidt?
So are we voting on all of section two, because I have two changes, I'm going to make the second paragraph, I just.
Oh, okay. It is, it's, it's gonna be all of three.
Okay. We're, we're in discussion now, and. We have amendment for the, to change the role and new rule, do we need another amendment, can we vote on that amendment, and then I make another amendment, too?
Yeah. We'll vote on that amendment, of course. Right, so all in favor of changing role new rules, say aye, any votes? Great, thank you, we will turn it back, we will, we will, trustee Schmidt, we will.
Okay, in the second paragraph, uh, the, second sentence, we overview, will emphasize that education, or, I'm sorry, the next sentence, that parents who wish, it says, parents who wish to withdraw their consent for their student to participate in instructional class, must notify the staff, I would like to switch withdrawal with give, instead of being an opt-out, I'd like to be an opt-in, that the parents who wish to give their consent for their student to participate in an instructional class, must notify staff in writing, at least one day prior to the start of the anticipated instruction, and I'd also like to, in the second one, or the, set that, do another one, schools will provide alternative educational activities for students who, if their parents do not give consent to the instruction of the, uh, subjects described in this section three.
So, I see what you're saying, but all I can think about is, like, because it, it's not technically talking about an entire class, it's talking about a portion of the class that might be taking place, if that makes sense. So, it's not gonna opt, opt in because they're already gonna sign their kid up for, I mean, I guess it's gonna be despite P E, there's gonna be a portion of the people where they're gonna have an educational resource, and they're already gonna have a P E, so they're already opting in. They just wanna opt out of a portion of that class, then they can opt out of that portion, is kind of how I'm understanding it, rather than, I mean, because if they sign up for the class, they've already opted in, does that make sense?
It does, but I look at it as this is a parental rights, that is a very, um, parental rights policy, and this is a very, let's say controversial, difficult issue. And so, I definitely think it should be an opt-in, that parents need to, you know, consciously opt into this, not just go, oh, if we did not realize it was ever there, I think it needs to be an opt-in, then it's such a.
Superintendent Alvin, or Chair.
You said.
So, so this parental permission is just a practice, so, so people know it's not, so, um, called the second, the rules for the come up. It's not guidance to any P E classes, not to script, there is a notification that goes on prior, informing the parents that this unit is coming out, and please provide and write, if you would like your child to opt out of that. I hear what you're saying, trustee Schmidt, but there is no exception, it is called down, and it is, the parents are made aware, and it is the opt, um, opt-out versus the opt-in. It is different, but parents are very well informed, um, of that, and it comes out, I'm gonna pause there, because, definitely administrators, which recently, last year, this was, is that's, that's still a practice, is notifying parents, knowing you're coming down.
Correct, so, then, it's gonna be an opt-out, most consistently across the board for, for units, well, in program development, those types of things. Right, they can just.
I just like trustee Schmidt to repeat the last, the key one, the key one, to give.
Well, I started with the overview, that sentence, the overview will emphasize the educational purpose of the, for parents who wish to give, so take out, withdraw, but give their consent for students to participate in an, uh, anticipated instruction. Schools will provide alternative educational activities for students who, if parents do not give consent to the instruction of the subjects described in the section.
Okay, so trustee Schmidt, I really have the amendment to change the word withdraw to give, if you can, oh, Chris Oxon, I'm so sorry.
I did have a question, to those, typically, how many people opt out, if they were for a third-class, if you want to, or?
Trustee Chris Oxon, I don't have the exact number, but I would say it's fair.
Fair as well. So, I guess it's, it would be easier to have an opt-out, because you only have one or two of those, the opt-in, the opt-out. Just try to see what point it is.
Yeah, they're opt-ins, yeah.
And, to speak to that issue, sad to say, there are some parents who never respond, and if it was always opt-in, there would be several kids who couldn't take part, because their parents couldn't be bothered to do it. Or, gee, I'm sure, it never happens, if a kid doesn't give the permission, pay it to the parents. So, I, I agree with, uh, trustee Chris Oxon.
Okay, so, do we have seconded motion to change the draw to give? So, that motion, right, so, in the, and just to verify, if, if, say, parents who wish to withdraw their consent, so it's not gonna be an opt-out versus opt-in, I'm, I'm just, you have one more.
No, that was just the.
Oh, okay. Well, I think the parental notification consent instruction, we have the amendment, um, for the change of the role of the new rule, and then keep what's pre-existing in this draft form, so, one of our expert. Section four, notification. Oh, okay. Okay, I make the motion to. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, great, well done, everybody. Oh, okay, great, thank you, trustee, all. That gets tricky when there's, like, so many votes and amendments and, like, discussions, it's fantastic, but it's hard to keep them all straight. Number four, notification of routine healthcare service.